For approval of first interim report, Mr. Bonet, right?
Yes, so while he queues up the PowerPoint presentation, as you know, per AB 1200, first interim projection indicate that the district will be able to meet its financial obligations for the current fiscal year or subsequent two years, given this staff is recommending approval of the first interim report and positive certification as presented here tonight by CBO Mark Bonet. Mr. Bonet?
While that's booting up, Mr. Bonet, can you remind me the original budget and then the budget as approved by the board? What are those two different dates that the -- is the original budget what was essentially approved as of June 30th? And then the, what you're counting as budget approved, board-approved operating budget, the column B? When did that one come about?
That one's coming about now. So, the original budget was adopted prior to June 30th. Then we did one revision 45 days after the state approved its budget. So, we made those adjustments at that time. And we have since made more adjustments that is, that are now in the final column of the Saks, or the first interim report. So, the numbers that you see at the far right column are the new budget numbers.
Well, my far right column is percent difference E to B to F. So, I think you're referring to a different document? It's the one you handed?
The column D, projected year totals.
Okay. And are you saying that those numbers are all the same as column B?
Uh, yes. And I will go through those changes and what's changed since the first revision until now. And where those changes occur categorized by the federal revenues, state revenues, and the expenses by major object.
Okay. And then what is, what is this, how is this different from what was in the board packet?
That's the PowerPoint presentation that I'm about to show you and go through.
All right.
Are we up? Well, you can follow along with your hand out there. So, the first page is, the purpose of the report is to evaluate the financial condition of the district as of October 31st. We have to state to the county and then to the state whether we're able to meet our financial obligations for the current year and the two subsequent years. So, that would give us a positive certification. And that's the certification that we fit into. So, I won't discuss the qualified and the negative.
That's great.
So, a little bit about the state education budget. As we continue to go to these workshops and especially down at the CSBA conference, we were, we are repeatedly told to be cautiously optimistic about the numbers that we've been seeing with the increased tax revenues and the result of the ending fiscal year 1213 revenues. So, the state still has a lot of debt to pay down, including deferrals to education and mandated costs to education. So, there's still debt the state has to pay before it starts giving ongoing money to education. But it does, it does still have to meet the Proposition 98 requirements. So, the state will be working that out amongst themselves between the legislature and the governor on how those monies start rolling out to districts. I also want to tell our community and the district school board that Proposition 30 really did not give districts extra money. Proposition 30 that was passed last November only continued funding to school districts, which meant we didn't have to cut anything. So, although we're very appreciative of the fact that the state of California passed Proposition 30, it wasn't any extra dollars coming to education. And the new funding model, as a model, doesn't give us any additional dollars. It rearranges how we receive dollars, even though we are getting a quote cost of living increase of about 1.56 percent. So, we're getting a little bit more money, but the, but the new funding model doesn't give us more money. It's, it's just a different way to allocate those, those dollars as opposed to the revenue limit formula. So, it's just a different formula that the state is using to give monies to education.
So, we won't get any extra money based on our concentration and supplement, our free and reduce and our EL students?
We are, it's packaged differently. We're getting more dollars because of a slight increase in the COLA and Proposition 98.
Right.
And I would like to come back to the board at a, at a future date and really explain how we're receiving those dollars and what the LCFF formula looks like compared to the past years of revenue limit dollars and state categorical dollars. I really want to go into further detail about that at a future time and not do that right now.
Yeah. I mean, that would be a complicated analysis. I'd like to see it.
It's very complicated.
But I guess I'd say your last two points a little different, which is, you know, Prop 30, together with projected upswings in revenues from a recovering economy, are bringing additional dollars into the system. And the LCFF, you know, funding model is shaping the distribution of those dollars differently. Individual school districts may, I think this, the state as a whole is going with Prop 30, which, a good piece of which will expire in six years. But the finances, you know, continuing to model out revenue increase projections to be able to claim that in eight years, we will have gotten to where we as a state were in funding levels in '07, '08, plus COLA.
Right.
So, we're recovering. I mean, we are seeing more absolute dollars. We're getting COLA because of these developments, but we're not getting, I mean, we're going to get back to where we were in '07, '08, plus COLA. So, that's, I guess.
Well, recent, recent analysis.
And any individual district could, you know, exceed, might, you know, do better based on their concentration or worse than they would have done under the old revenue limit model. And in the eight years is probably rather optimistic. Maybe that's what you were going to say next.
Right. The LAO is projecting a little longer, maybe another year or two before we get to the 2007, '08 funding levels. And also remember that the state of California is ranked at the bottom three in the nation of funding education. So, we haven't lifted funding for education in the state of California.
We're not, that's absolutely right. We're not, doesn't, LCFF doesn't deal with adequacy of funding.
So, looking at our revenues, they are now $10 million, 235,16. So, our unrestricted is $8 million, 446,312. Our estimated actuals for restricted column is $1 million, 788,704. And then I'll talk about the areas of what was increased in a few more slides. Total expenses are now at $10 million, 415,453. We're looking at deficit spending at the far right bottom corner of $354,716. With a projected ending fund balance at the end of the year of $4 million, 736,387.
Can you explain to me that transfer out?
Of 174.
Yeah, of the 174.
The transfer out is going to the cafeteria fund. We, the general fund subsidizes the cafeteria fund. And in the past, that figure has been in excess of $300,000. So, we've, we've brought it down.
What's the, I was trying to remember this earlier today for another, what's that term that we use when we're talking about the cafeteria fund or special ed where the general fund?
Encroaches.
Encroaches, thank you. Encroaches on our general fund.
And I do have a slide in here of general, other general fund categorical programs that do encroach on the general fund. So, we'll get to that a little bit later. So, again, we're, we're deficit spending. Our fund balances dropped from $5 million down to 4.7 million. So, our total operating revenues went up $279,000 from our first revision after the 45 days after the state adopted its budget. $124,835 has come in as unrestricted dollars, and we've lost $403,926 in the categorical areas. The LCFF dollar showed about a $201,000 increase from the first budget revision. And that main change occurred because of class size reduction that we had in, and we put that up into LCFF.
So, what was the increase of the unrestricted dollars? How did we get that? The 124?
Let me go, I'm going to go through where the increases and decreases occurred.
The, let me just understand this one before you do that. So, the $403,000 decrease, is that state and federal categorical restricted?
Yes.
Okay. And the, the LCFF dollar, $201,000 increase over first revision, that's since August? Or since, that's not since the June 30th?
That's since the August.
Revision.
That's.
And in August, we had already?
We had increased.
Increased it from the June 30th?
That's correct.
Do you remember what that increase, wasn't that 200,000 or so?
Uh, I want to say it was about 200. I can't remember exactly off the top of my head.
Yeah. So, from June, were LCFF increase would be around 400 or so?
Probably about the 400 that were lost in categorical.
Okay.
But let me go, let me go through that. So, our federal revenues have decreased 38,000. Those decreases are listed there. The, we did receive an increase in Title I, NCLB, small increase in Title II, small increase in Title III. Medicare went up a little bit. The large decrease is $103,400 because of MAH not being funded by the state. Those are the Medi-Cal Medicare reimbursements that we were getting for serving Medi-Cal Medicare students. And the way, the state stopped funding because there were districts that were overclaiming. Or the way that school districts in the state of California were filing those claims. They've really now cleaned it up. And according to Juliette Dunn, we're expected to get some of that money either late this year or next year, but we don't know what that is. We do know it's gone away for now. And we continue to file claims in the hopes of those dollars coming back to the district.
So, what is the 103 based on prior year reimbursements or students that we're serving this year that we know this dollar amount represents?
Prior year reimbursement, and that was the budget for the current year.
And what are the services that we provide that would get reimbursed under this?
For instance, speech services, psychological services, counseling services, services from the nurse. We were claiming as other districts were some teacher time, which the feds have now come in and said you cannot claim classroom teachers in assisting students. But you can claim more direct services like speech and language, nurses, nurse, counseling, psychologist.
And you?
And some of, we now can claim some, we can also claim some administrator time. But that's been limited also.
But you said that the state stopped funding it, but it's federal money? Or the feds made the state stop?
It's a flow-through from the federal to the state.
Yeah.
So, the feds.
So, who's cracking down? The feds or the state?
The feds are cracking down and requiring the states to, to scrutinize the districts more.
And, and, but we're anticipating we're going to get some of this back, but it's not going to, might not, we might not see it in this year at all.
That's correct. So, with the, with the rule changes, districts are now adopting to those, to those rules. And I'm not quite sure the, what the requirements are by the feds as, as these changes go through. But somehow they have to be documented and conveyed to the feds what districts are now doing and what the changes have been made going forward.
But in the meantime, it's not, you say we're still filing claims, so we might get backlog paid for?
We might get, yes.
Or they might just say, sorry?
That's my understanding that we may get paid for some of the backlog stuff, depending on how we submitted those claims. And I don't know if they'll be reduced or if they'll be paid if we didn't make the changes, let's say, last year. So, if we were claiming teacher time, I don't know if they're going to reduce that teacher time or not fund that program.
All right. Okay.
So, moving to state revenues, increase of $51,000. We had class size reduction went down $152,000. Mandated costs, we've received about $25,000. So, we're, we're adjusting our budget as we receive that money, as it comes in.
The class size, that's because the, that categorical ended? And it's kind of folded into?
It's folded now into LCFF.
So, are we seeing it implicitly in some other budget line?
Not on the income basis. On the expenditure side, yes, we're still accounting for that. And that's part of the more detailed analysis I want to get into and convey to the board with the new funding model versus the old funding model. And how those dollars shifted up to LCFF. And then compare total revenues from prior years to total expected revenues with the new LCFF model.
Okay.
That will be helpful.
Yeah. When are you going to be able to do that?
I just started compiling that information now. We are lucky to have an intern from San Francisco State, and they've been helping us with accumulating some of our construction costs. And he started working on a spreadsheet this week with regard to accumulating that information.
Okay.
So, I hope to have it early in January. Lottery's gone up a little bit. ACES, emergency repair program that's connected to the Williams Act is at $45,000. The other big one is a clean energy program. This is Prop 39. That's $58,000. Mental health, $29,000. And then other state revenues, there are about four or five different programs that accumulated to the $10,000. So, the state revenues increased by $51,000.
So, did we have some emergency repair program claims pending before the state allocation board?
Not to my knowledge.
So, that, I mean, the, the Williams, you only, you only get that money if you put in a claim and you, you know, did work. If we're talking about the same program, which, which was, we call the ERP program.
That's what this is.
Yeah. They don't just allocate that pro rata to every kid in the state. They, they give it to districts who had a emergency repair problem, did work, and got it approved.
I remember having gone through that process in prior districts. Now, I don't know, well, the funding stopped.
Right.
After 2008. So, this might be a backlog of those claims.
Right. So, maybe that was before you were here?
I think that's what that is.
Okay. Okay.
Well, when the state made the cuts since 2008, it, they stopped.
They broke their promise to us, basically.
They stopped paying everything.
Yeah.
They stopped paying revenue limit to the tune of 22 percent.
They owe us about $400 million yet.
Can we find out what that dollar amount is from? What project is from? It makes sense. It make, if you could just come back a little, at a later date. If you could just come back at a later date, that's less than.
I will try to find out what that is.
I mean, we have the dollars in, in our account, so we must be, I mean.
We don't know if it's the max, but yeah.
Yeah, we can go back and trace where it, where it comes from.
In all likelihood, we spent it already. It's kind of how it tends to work out.
Right. Because you have to spend the money before you get the reimbursement.
Right.
That was the initial requirement.
Right.
And we got that changed. But I think, given that they cut.
The funding.
They zeroed it out. In fact, districts often did, you know, I got to fix the boiler.
But when you, when you get the reimbursement, doesn't it come with the reimbursement of what the check is for, what project, what work is, is for or from? It should.
We don't receive a check anymore. It just gets a portion through the county. So, I'll have to.
You can still, you can find out.
We will research that.
Okay.
It'd be good to know.
Other local revenue increases, $65,000. Unrestricted is 35. Restricted was 33. And the SALPA transfer went down slightly for $65,000.
And what are those other, is that the parcel tax or developer fees or what?
It is not the parcel tax nor developer fees. It is.
Dory, you know, Dory, do you know what this is?
Other.
Come out, you got to come up to, come up, come up to the bank, please.
I didn't know we had any other local revenue besides parcel tax or developer fees.
There's some stale dated warrants. There's income from Berkeley City College, Stewart Foundation, McKinney-Vento, BITSA. Those are the, some of the restricted ones.
So, the Stewart Foundation?
There was a $9,500 grant from the Stewart Foundation.
When did that come in?
That came in the last couple of months.
Probably the last piece of earlier grant or something.
What's that from? Dr. Linda, what's that from?
That's the additional funding that we received when he came.
Hi.
$9,500 is. The $9,500 came from Emery Ed.
Okay.
But under the Stewart Foundation paying for Wanda Hartley's salary.
Got you.
Up to December.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay. So, it's a real mishmash.
So, with that? Yeah, there's, it's a bunch of different ones. Some, I think that's the largest one, $9,000. One of the smaller ones is the McKinney-Vento, $1,500.
So, with that being said, how are we getting back to the increase in, for 124,835? Because, you know, you said we're going to walk through to get to that dollar amount when we, when it asks, where did that increase come from? And what I see so far via the report, I see a decrease of $38,000, increase of 51, increase of 65. When I take the 51 and add it to the 65, I get $116,845. So, there increased somewhere else or? I don't, I don't back into the 124,835. You can come back.
I'll have to come back and explain that to the board.
That's fine.
But mathematically, this is, that's how it worked out between the first revision and the second revision.
Okay. All right, but it's not shown here.
So, overall, the next slide, the overall expenditures are up $695,000 from the first And those showed up in these object codes. Certificated salaries, $205,000, 333. Classified salaries, $22,000. Employee benefits, $91,000. Books and supplies, $219,000. Services and other operating expenses, $158,000. And other outgo went down slightly, $2,000. So, the certificated salaries went up as, as a result of our negotiations with our teachers.
But I thought that was for 1213.
That was for 1213, but it's paid in 1314. So, it's an adjustment in the current year. We can't go back and adjust the books for last year. And the cash went out this year.
Like retro.
The other big item, books and supplies, we've been moving ending fund balance to pay for the computers that Ryan has been purchasing. See what else I have here?
We allocated the 400 last year.
The additional entitlements from those categorical programs were moved into books and supplies. The services and other operating expenses.
Yeah, what's in there?
Those were, those helped to pay for the consultant Lou. Yes, part of it was Lou Edwards. Also, the ACES program went up about $55,000. Also, the ACES program went up about $55,000 into, into that area. And we had a transfer from $4,000 to $5,000 for the Gear Up program. That's why the $5,000 went up. Earlier, I had talked about those programs that encroach on the general fund. Here's a list of them. The biggest one is, is special ed. That's at $398,000. Special ed IDEA, which is a federal funded special ed program, that's $71,000. We make a contribution to special ed to the tune of $14,000. Mental health, and the, the RS numbers are the resource codes that we use, so it's resource code 3327 and resource code 6512, mental health. That's $18,000. And then ongoing routine repair and maintenance, we make a contribution to that program to the tune of $139,000. So when you get state funding for building or modernizing a school, as we did with Annie Yates, you have to put aside dollars in an ongoing routine and repair maintenance. The state wants to ensure that you keep those buildings and facilities kept up.
So what about the encroachment on food service? Where would that be?
That is shown separately in that transfer out, the $174,000. These are within the general fund, so these, these transfers are from unrestricted to restricted programs. When we support funds outside of the general fund, it shows up in that transfer section, and that 174 is transferring out of the general fund into the cafeteria fund.
Okay. But I was transferring out of the general fund, right?
That's correct. These dollars, these dollars stay.
It's also an encroachment on the general fund. These just move around within the general fund.
Right, but from unrestricted to restricted. So our fund ending balance, in our multi-year projection, we maintain a 4% reserve for this year and the next two years. We do have deficit spending that we do need to address. The next page shows what that deficit spending is. In 1516, it gets up to $700,000. Next year, it's at $685,000. So we do have to keep an eye on this. We do have the ending fund balance to help mitigate that, so we have time to make decisions as we do our budget planning for 1415. And I know we do have a large ending balance, but this board has wanted to designate some of that to, to pay down some debt, and we're looking at, at how to address some of that debt currently, and we'll have that information before the end of the second interim report.
Oh, that's good.
So I guess my?
No, I was just thinking, I know that, I mean, it does look crazy to have such a large ending fund balance, but as you said, we, we have been very thoughtful about making sure we're designating those dollars that we have that are tied to allegations, so that we don't find ourselves in mystery land, looking, searching to pay something off. So I think that was prudent and smart move, but it just does look odd.
You're right, and that happened because we received so much money last year. But thank goodness we did. I want to say, last year at P1, or the first interim, that $700,000 number in 1516 was, I believe, 1.1 million. So.
A difference.
There is a difference, and it's because of retaining the Prop 30 dollars and the slight increase that we got in 1314 from the state.
What increase are you projecting in 1415? From the state?
I don't have that information off the top of my head. I can't get it to you. It's the projections that the LAO and has, has put into the LCFF funding formula that the County Office of Education have prescribed to us. So there are a couple of different models that have different increases for 1415 and 1516. School services have, has a different amount than, than the State Department of Finance, for example. But we are using what the county is prescribing, and I think they're using the more conservative number from the Department of Finance.
That's the BASS calculator?
Yes.
So we're using the BASS calculator, not school service?
That's correct.
And, and the BASS calculator, I think you're right, does rely on the Department of Finance. The, but I thought LAO might have been more conservative than the BASS calculator, or than finance was being.
I don't believe so. I know that, I've gotten up in a meeting at the County Office of Ed and said, why are we using the Department of Finance's numbers for these projections? Because they haven't been right the past several years. They've always been way off.
Like too conservative?
Too conservative.
The finance has been too conservative.
Yes.
And things have grown more than they're telling us.
Right. The LAO office has been, has been closer to the mark than the Department of Finance. Now, if you recall back when we adopted the budget, I think it was the first time the Department of Finance, the LAO's office were, were more in agreement with the projections for 1314. But we are using the BASS numbers with regard to the increases.
So that probably addresses my question, which is, I know, the number I have in mind is that, you know, I know this year, as a whole, the state took an 11.78% step towards full LCFF funding. Toward that eight-year, you know, what is hoped to be an eight-year target now. Next year, they're saying they're gonna take a 16.49 or 54, or some, you know, 16 and a half percent step. And that's what they were saying before revenues, you know, have been looking a little bit rosier than, than, than they are now. So, but I think the 16 whatever must be built into the BASS calculator.
That doesn't equate to a 16% year over year.
No, 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 it's, it's, right, it's the step towards, it's the gap closing.
Right, it's closing the gap.
Yeah.
So I think next year's.
And what that could mean for a given district is gonna be different for every district.
I want to say it's about 2% on average.
Okay.
And I think the year after that, it's closer between 3 and 4. So the percentages grow, grow also. But I can come back to you with that specific information. And I'll do that when, in January, when I give you the, the analysis between LCFF and past revenue limit monies, and how those things changed. But as we move forward and start building our budget for next year, I will be keeping in mind these, these numbers. And we'll have a little more accurate numbers when we get to the second interim report with regard to the, I'm speaking directly to the deficit spending numbers.
And when is the second interim coming around?
February. February, sometime in February.
It's as of January 31st, or December 31st?
No, January 31st.
January 31st.
So when will we know?
So that'll be in March.
So when will we have accurate numbers via, you know, via the state regarding our revenue?
May revise?
For 1314, that may be correct.
Oh, for 1314?
Because, you know, state taxes are up, but sometimes they won't make any changes until the end of the fiscal year.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And like I said earlier, the state still has a backlog of debt to address before it's gonna start pumping dollars into our LCFF funding model. There's the deferrals to take care of, there's mandated costs to take care of, and the billions of dollars statewide. So they still have a lot of debt to pay off before they start putting money into ongoing funding. I think we heard this, well, last week, that there's going to be some poker played by the governor with regard to hiding his cards via the tax receipts as he builds his budget for next year. So when the January proposal comes out for 1415, I think it's gonna be a modest increase, and you're not gonna see, you're not gonna see the increases that may be reflected by some of the tax dollars that we've gotten since July 1 till, till December.
No, my concern is just giving us, you know, a solid, solid revenue number that we can build, you know, our district off of.
Well, when they moved to LCFF, some of the protection was taken away for districts with regard to that. So going back to Emory's certification to file, we'll be filing a positive certification. We can meet our current year budget, and we can meet the budget for the two subsequent Any, any other questions?
Yeah, so can you go back to the slide, expenses revisited? Shows the 1,000s and 2,000s, et cetera? So, first of all, factual question, the, that's expenses revisited since the first revised budget in August.
That's correct.
So what does that number look like, what do those numbers look like, do you think, if, if you went back to the June 30 approved budget? You probably can't do it off the top of your head, but there was another, that was another, what were we saying? Was that 200,000, 180,000?
I don't think we changed the expenditures much on the first revision.
That could be true.
I want to say, if we changed it at all.
We didn't have the agreement with.
We did not.
Union at that.
It was very small. If the, if we made changes in expenditures, it was relatively small compared to this.
It seemed like 185,000 sticks in my head, but.
In, in, in the differences over, yeah.
From the, in that few months.
And that would have been because of losing some categorical funding, or some changes with regard to funding. We lost expenditures.
All right, well.
So the bulk of our changes in expenditures are happening right here.
Contracts or negotiations.
Yeah. So here's, here's the concern that I continue to have, and that is that, if you recall, we approved as a board the first revision based on a showing from the staff how we are spending our increased revenues generated by unduplicated students to increase or improve services for unduplicated students. And we, we haven't seen that showing to date. So backing, backing up, we, we have gotten, you know, some 400,000 or so, it seems, over and above June, that was like increased revenues, some significant portion of which is for low-income EL foster youth students that, that need to be spent somehow to increase or improve services. And, my last point, and then you can respond. The, yes, that, I've been hot and heavy involved in my day job with negotiating with the state board and the CTA and other stakeholders on what these rules should look like, what the LCAP should look like. And that's still in process. It's gonna be adopted, both the LCAP and the regs, next month. Not just the regs, but the LCAP too, it looks like. Today, the state board put out their next draft LCAP, and it, it says, and I don't think this is going away, okay, "In the 2014-15 LCAP year, also describe how the LEA meets the intent of the proportionality provision in the 2013-14 fiscal year." So I've been saying, we don't get a free pass this year. We are gonna have to, the law applies this year, we're gonna have to show how we're increasing or improving services with our unduplicated portion of the increase this year. And I'm, and I, you know, if I look at that, I see a lot of money, you know, they're all good expenditures, but, you know, the certificated classified salaries and employee benefits are not increases or improvements in service, it's the same service. So how are we gonna justify how we've increased or improved expenditures?
Well, I'm gonna have to first justify the revenues, and that's where that analysis is gonna come into place, because that 400,000, a lot of that is shifting from the state categoricals up into the LCFF. And then compare that to what we received in prior, the prior year under the revenue limit formula, to really calculate what our increase is from the revenue limit formula to LCFF. Now, the, for Emory, the unduplicated dollar amounts are huge. They're, they're hu, they're huge.
Yeah. It's probably 36% of our LCFF revenues are, you know, some, somewhere between, I want to say 27 and 40% maybe of our.
I don't know if they're, they're up to 40%, but they're probably down the 20% area, maybe a little higher than that. But those are some of the same dollars we've been receiving in prior years. They're, they're not new dollars. It's just a redistribution of those dollars. And that's what I need to show the board, that, that analysis of the prior year funding and the new LCFF funding, and how all of that money shifted from the categoricals to LCFF, to the, to the unduplicated supplemental concentration grant dollars, and, and class size reduction, and our, what our base grant is. So I want to show that analysis between what we've received in the past for the same students, compared to the LCFF funding model for our current students, and then how the state wants to break that out. And then how the state wants to break that out and what they're saying we need to spend on that unduplicated count. And I've been struggling with this in my own head, how to show that. And I think it will all click with me once I get that analysis put together. And then, and then take some of those categorical programs and put them into those supplemental and concentration grant areas. With the EIA specifically.
Yeah, certainly that one fits.
I've been struggling with this.
Yeah.
Cause sleepless nights.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, yes, that makes both of us. I mean, the requirement isn't to show the, at least it's not stated as, show us how you're spending the increase you're getting under LCFF versus the money you got under revenue limit. That's not, that's not the, you can make that calculation showing, but it's, show us what you're spending, show us that you are increasing or improving services in proportion to the increase in funds apportioned on unduplicated. So, yeah, just to conclude, you know, that might be part of how we're spending our funds. I don't know that we're spending $400,000 on RTI. And it might be that, maybe we could make that showing. I mean, we'd also need to show that those are services that we weren't doing last year. If we're increasing or improving services. So, I mean, I think there is a challenge here in that it's, there's two kinds of increases going on. One is, we got some more money. The other is, the state's now set up a new formula that's increased actually how much we focus on these unduplicated kids.
Absolutely. And remembering that we adopted a original budget, not knowing all that information.
Right. And I think, you might be on to something.
That's where my difficult piece is.
Sure. You might, let me, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
You might be on to something in that, that you're, I think how I would articulate what you're proposing to do is establishing the baseline above which we would need to increase. Fairly high by virtue of saying, well, we got EIA, that's what we used to do. And, yeah, we got class size reduction, but that disproportionately benefited our high need students, you know, because 85% of the kids enjoying class size reduction are high need kids. And this, if we got money to support our RTI, then, and that's focused mostly on high need kids or dropout prevention, and that's, I mean, there are ways that you might be able to build those former categoricals, or at least a significant portion of them, into a baseline that reduces how much we need to actually be increasing or improving services.
And the state is using different formula for class size reduction at 24 to 1. We're maintaining classrooms at 20 to 1. And I do understand that that is a result of us having parcel tax also.
But we're going beyond what the state's requiring, but we were doing that last year.
That's correct.
And we didn't have to.
Absolutely.
So we're not increasing or improving a service there. That's one we're maintaining. So we're not going to get credit for it in the LCAP when we're explaining what we did in 1314. So again, you know, I'm happy to continue to thinking through this with you or, you know.
I say use them.
As soon as I get that information together, I'm going to run it by you before I present it to the board.
No, remember, you're right on it. In my office today, our fiscal director and CBO was going through this to present to Berkeley's board. And all the comparisons and the reports that you're talking about are the ones that they were creating to show to their board. So, I mean, my suggestion would be making a phone call to Berkeley and getting their format and their presentation and at least looking at it. And it will most likely give you some ideals. It's been my understanding that Berkeley has had about three or four districts calling them, wanting their LCFF presentation and formats because it's, my understanding right now is probably one of the best in the counties. So that would be my suggestion to at least formulate your ideals and see how we can carve out some of these revenues and expenditures, especially for the supplemental and concentration students.
So I, yeah, I mean, I said, two more points, I think. Because it is the first year that we're going to get a lot of leeway on 1314. I think 1315 is going to be a little harder. But we got to show something for 13, and I don't think, you know, as I said, salaries and benefits are going to satisfy the qualitative or quantitative increase or improvement. And two, if I can read the tea leaves, I think the fact that we are an intensely concentrated district is, it's likely that the comparator in that increase will be what we, what we were increasing or improving over what we were doing before. As opposed to, if we were like a 20% unduplicated district, we're increasing or improving the program vis a vis the general program. You know, we're increasing or improving things for unduplicated vis a vis what other kids are getting. That's kind of a harder thing to show. We have to show, you know, it's like supplemental service. But I still think at a minimum for 1314, we need to be somehow showing we're increasing or improving what we were doing, you know, with this portion of LCFF money over what we were doing last year.
Soon as I get that information, I'm going to run it by you.
Okay, great.
Any other questions?
Do we have an updated BASS calculator Excel spreadsheet? You sent me one in like September or something.
Yes. The one that I use for the first interim, I can send you-
Can you send me that?
Yes. And in that is embedded the state spreadsheet on the categorical programs that were rolled into LCFF. So, and that's some of the work that I had our interim do today was take all those numbers and list them all out for me on a spreadsheet. So anyway, I'll show it to you once I get it done.
Great, thanks.
And as this is the item that is up for approval this evening, any other questions from Mr. Bonet this evening? Any members of the public have any comments, questions? Those who I'm sure have worked on it, know much about it. All right, any, bringing it back to the board, would like to move forward this evening? Everybody's dead. I'll move that we move forward with the positive certification, which I'm really glad about, and approve the first interim report. Is there a second?
I think there's no doubt that we satisfy the requirements for a positive certification. So I will second.
Any objections to that? Ms. Tamarie, can you please to roll call? Yes?
Yes. Vice President Athol.
Yes.
Clerk Hesch.
Yes.
County Representative Doin.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bonet. We look forward to that deep dive next month. We'll now move on-